Good evening. I have 7:00 PM on Thursday, June 26, 2025. Before we convene the meeting, let's please be reminded that we are being televised and recorded by Sandwich Community Television. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is anyone here for public comment? Yes, sir. Yes, please. And make sure, please, that the green light is on and speak into the microphone, please. You have five minutes uninterrupted. Okay, you'll have five minutes uninterrupted, and it's the format that we can't respond to you that we listen.
Understood.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Carl Ageness, and I reside at 61 Wood Avenue in the Town Neck neighborhood of Sandwich. I'm here representing the Town Neck Speed Limits for Safety Committee. In Town Neck, with 600 densely packed houses, our roads are our sidewalks. We have no curbs, no crosswalks, no center lines, no streetlights, no advisory signs that children are at play. Yet our speed limit is the same as the developed areas of Cotuit Road and Meeting House Road, Quaker Meeting House Road. Our only speed limit sign is on Town Neck Road, near the railroad tracks and Tupper Road. We feel forgotten. Our goals are simple, for the town to designate the Town Neck neighborhood as a safety zone per Commonwealth statutes. This designation will require a speed limit change from the current 30 miles per hour down to a safer 20 mile per hour speed limit. The Commonwealth describes a safety zone as follows: The streets should be adjacent to a land use that is likely to be an origin or destination for vulnerable road users. Examples: Town Neck Beach, the Boardwalk, Mill Creek Marsh, Treehouse Brewery, and many, many more. The safety zones should contain one or more areas that have potential conflicts between motor vehicles and vulnerable road users that warrant a reduction in speeds. Examples: residents and visitors walking with children and dogs on our streets, seniors walking for exercise, children riding bikes, and all sorts of movements toward the beach, Mill Creek Marsh, Marsh and the Boardwalk. The Town Neck Speed Limits for Safety Committee has canvassed the Town Neck neighborhood and obtained almost 200 signatures of support for this action to be approved by the Town of Sandwich. We have also been endorsed by the Sandwich Bike and Pedestrian Committee, and most recently Treehouse Brewery. The Town of Sandwich can adopt this policy without Commonwealth approval. In closing, the Town Neck Speed Limits for Safety Committee is requesting to be added to the next agenda of the Board of Selectmen so that we can discuss this matter in depth. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else for public comment?
Hello. Jonathan Finn, 3 Chipman Road. I'm going to try to read my chicken scratches here. But I'm here to ask the town and the board to do as other Cape towns have and publicly discuss and share its position, policies, and plans related to ICE's actions on the Cape, including Sandwich to aggressively implement mass deportations that go way past removing criminals. We've seen ICE holding students, workers, and tax-paying neighbors withholding due process and rights. I ask the board to take this up at the next meeting and put residents' fears to rest. Recently, I've heard examples the other day from somebody in Bourne whose husband is a resident and is not white and is now afraid to leave their house. They've completely curtailed their social activities because they're afraid of being apprehended for no reason and, you know, and leaving two small children at home. It's not right. This is happening all over the place. We all know the role that migrants of all kinds play in the Cape economy, and we all know if there were mass deportations in this town of migrants, the economy of this town would be dead overnight because people wouldn't have the services that they get, and there would be nobody to take those jobs. So again, I just ask the town to consider this, as other towns have, publicly discuss it and publicly share plans and policies with the public. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Finn. Anyone else for public comment? Okay, seeing none. Review and approval of minutes. Okay, they're a work in progress. We'll, right. Okay, thought I missed something. Okay. Town Manager Report.
Quick update. Our next meeting is in two weeks, on July 10. The Finance Committee did meet Tuesday night, so I'm going to talk about that under Old Business, about the FY25 budget and give you an update on that. And then just several quick items to update the board on. I don't know if you've noticed, but there's an issue with the Town Hall bubbler. There's a leak underneath the pedestal, so that needs to be repaired. So we're going to give as much notice as we can publicly with signs out there. But once we take apart the pedestal, find out what the problem is, get the right equipment, fix it, it's likely to be out for two or three days. So we'll go as fast as we can. We'll give as much public notice, but we need to fix that. And again, signs will be posted out there, and we'll get information out on our website as quickly as we can and get the work done as fast as we can. People may notice that this is making hay season for the DPW. There's all sorts of contractors out and about doing work. A lot of chip sealing has taken place and other work. Just wanted to highlight that if it's significant repairs, DPW gives information on our website, on the DPW page, and flyers get distributed to abutters. And so just want to thank everyone for their patience. And I think we all feel strongly that these surface treatments really extend the life of the road significantly. So it's an inconvenience about once every 10 years or so, and I think a lot of other places we'd love to have the chip sealing taken place in front of our house. They just did Old County Road in two days, and it looks awesome. Just one that I travel more often. Another issue with DPW that I sent around to the board, I think yesterday, and that's DPW is working on a public safety campaign. So next week, they're going to have several public outreach efforts leading up to the July 4 weekend. And just, you know, some of the messaging that'll go out will be to follow the posted speed limits, to stay focused, and don't drive impaired. It's part of a larger outreach that the county is looking at as well, with an ultimate goal of having no fatalities on Cape Cod. And so that's something that I think is important and will be looked at for quite some time. A couple of other notices I thought you'd be interested in. The State Division of Marine Fisheries sent a formal letter this week about shellfish bed closures, and that happens whenever, obviously in the warmer months, but whenever we relay the contaminated shellfish from the Taunton River to Mill Creek, which we do every year, they make sure that that notice goes out again. So they did just notify us, and I don't know if the public's aware, but most of our shellfish comes from the Taunton River. It is contaminated. It gets brought here, and then roughly around Thanksgiving season, thereabouts, nature does the trick, and the state tests the water and the meat on the shellfish numerous times before they allow us to open up so people can get their licenses. And that's just on the quahogs. The oysters are all grown locally from seed in Mill Creek. Leanne Drake wanted me to pass along that the ZBA, after many, many public hearings and deliberation, they did vote to approve the Village Green Affordable Housing Project on Tuesday night with appropriate conditions. There's many conditions there. The project now has to go before several state entities for review at that level. Just wanted to pass that along. We do have a copy of the special permit or the comprehensive permit conditions and some of the other material, if anyone's interested in it. I think I've shared with you before, but we've been working within Good Health about their donation agreement. As the board knows, they contributed $200,000 this year to go towards our two school resource officer positions in the schools. So we're working on formalizing a donation agreement, which is voluntary, and then trying to figure out if it makes sense to waive our host community agreement, because the way the state laws have changed and regulations, it really doesn't carry much weight. So that's something that we've been going back and forth with them on. And so I think later this summer, we'll be presenting that to the board to consider. If you've driven by, there's some split rail fencing going up at the Deacon Eldred House property. It's about 50% done. Most of the rails that have gone up are at the front of the property, but it's important to point out, as you face the structure to the left where there's the public easement to water, there's going to be split rail fencing there to demarcate that area. So that should be done over the next week. We did receive a positive test from testing on Tuesday for cyanobacteria at Wakeby Pond and especially in front of the Ryder property. Not especially because it was higher, but many times Wakeby can test positive, but Ryder doesn't. It all depends on how it floats. So all the usual protocols have been followed. The public notices and postings went out, physical postings as well. And then the planned retest through our contract with APCC is planned for early next week. So usually takes them about a day to get the test results. And also, we can go and visually see if it needs to be tested again or if it looks like it's cleared. In that case, we take tests, we bring them down to the county, and they run the tests for us. Another additional public health notice I wanted to make everyone aware of is the West Nile mosquito samples in some of our neighboring communities and nearby communities have tested positive in terms of in mosquitoes. There have been no positive human tests, and no mosquitoes in Sandwich have tested positive. But as you can imagine, the percentage that get tested is very low. But it's just that risk level remains unchanged, but it is that time of year. So just wanted to make the public aware of it. And then lastly, I know we're going to talk about this later on in the night, but the fireworks behind the Henry T. Wing School are planned for Saturday night. Should kick off around 9:00. That being said, the weather looks so-so. So based on discussions between the rec department and the contractor, they're going to make a decision by 5:00 whether or not to proceed or cancel. And again, the firework company will play a big role in helping to make that decision. Also wanted to point out that with all the ongoing construction work at the Wing School, the contractor and the owners have been really good about trying to make sure the security fencing is beefed up, assuming the night goes forward. And there's some other areas that have been roped off and taped off as well. So just if something is cordoned off, please don't go in that area. And that's it.
Great. Thank you. Any questions for Bud?
Sure. Do we have a rain date for the fireworks?
There is no rain date. If it gets canceled, they're not happening this year. The company's so tied up, they give us credit for everything we paid for next year.
Okay. The other question I had, and we ran into it last year. If you look around Morse Road, they have put cones on both sides of the road. Now, we ran into a problem last year, and we mentioned it, and I think they ended up taking one side of those cones down finally. We don't have the Wing School to park in anymore up front. And my question is, where are all these people going to park? Last year, I think after considerable consideration, you talked to the police chief, and he had taken, gave the word to take cones down on one side of the road because on the other side, it says no parking there anyway. So that's something we may want to look at, because there really is no place to park up there if you, both sides of the road.
I'll check on that.
Okay. All good on that.
But we talked earlier this week about the Ryder Beach issue, and I'm sure that my colleagues have seen the correspondence around activities there and the need for more attendance or any attendance, actually. Any progress on that?
Yeah, so I, you know, consulted with the right department heads and Chief Keane. So before he went on vacation, he let me know. So he did reach out to the Mashpee Harbor Masters Office and to the State Environmental Police. So Mashpee has three boats on the pond this weekend, and the State Environmental Police have one. He offered one officer from Sandwich to go on one of the Mashpee boats, and so far, they've said they don't need that, but we've offered that. So if they change their mind, we'll have one of our officers go with them. And then he's told every shift in that sector to go down at least four times each shift to check the beach, to see if, you know, all the activities are either in conformance with what the rules are or if they're not. I think the concerns that we heard about mostly related to members of the public, which is their right to access the state boat ramp in Mashpee, and I think probably where the concerns have been. It sounds like some of them may be excessive speed and noise, and then depending on what happens later, like what activities take place on the beach. So the police are going to go down there regularly just to keep an eye on things as best we can. I know we've been trying to get parking attendance at several of our facilities and haven't had too much success getting applicants, but that is a priority if we can get it and trying to get somewhere, at least at the front, to be able to monitor at least people who go in that way.
Yeah, I think that would, the lake issue is, and I live on the lake, obviously, so I'm very familiar with this, but the lake issue is one thing. And I know that Mashpee's trying to position with the state around control of the boat ramp. But the number of non-residents that are parking in Ryder over the weekend, when I went there on Sunday, you could barely drive in the parking lot and turn around because the cars are just packed in there wall-to-wall, none with resident stickers, because I went and took a look. So, and that activity lasts late into the evening. And I know that our DNR people are rounding up people to move their cars out before the gates get locked. The people who don't move their cars out are calling the police, getting the police to come down and open the gates to let them out after hours. And it's just, it just keeps getting worse every year. And I think a lot of people have been watching it happen for a number of years, and
We did.
There's a lot of text messages and phone calls coming my way as a result.
Yeah, we have an active, positive relationship with, was it Friends of Lowell Holly or the
The trustees.
Trustees in Lowell Holly. And so, in fact, I think we share a portion of a beach with them too as well. So we've been in communication with them. It's interesting when you look at the town property line, it's sort of bizarre that only like 1% or 2% of the water in the whole Wakeby Lake is technically in Sandwich, but obviously, it impacts us. And so I think ours is sort of a quiet, out-of-the-way area where people might go if that's where they decide to have a party or whatever they're doing. So we need to keep an eye on that.
Yeah, it's the area where the sailing lessons used to operate out of. That's where the party happens.
Yeah. And there are some buoy lines.
I'm not at the party, just.
There are buoy lines too that are set at a certain, in this particular area on purpose. So that helps if any monitoring needs to take place by the Mashpee Harbor Masters Office, that helps them out to know where the areas are.
Got it.
Okay, I got it. These are the pictures where they're probably, I spent the last two days out there at Ryder property. Yesterday, I went around and talked to the complaints. We had 10 complaints emailed to us. People have to close their doors during the daytime, their windows. They just can't take the noise. The jet ski's been modified with the exhaust on them. There is a bylaw on the Town of Mashpee that says no modifying of jet ski exhaust. So I went and met with them, walked around, went over to Mashpee, met the people in the town beach, and said if they had any problems, to let us know. Says they're working on it. I met with the Lowell Reservation manager over there, and they're going to try to keep contact on it. They've had problems too. But from what I got from the information and talking to the neighbors and the property owners, they congregate in the Town of Sandwich property. We have an area roped off for swimming, and then we don't have an area roped off onto the north of our beach. There's picnic benches in there. There's garbage barrels for them. And I think our conservation, or whoever it was, even went to, so far has put signs in.
Portuguese.
Portuguese, German, whoever, telling them so they know they're there. Okay? There's nobody in the gatehouse. Like you said, there's nobody on the beach. I think it's time that we take a vote, whatever we're going to do, to have somebody in this place again when it's open. Because if you lock the gate, you're not even going to see these people in there. If the police department goes in there, they don't get out of the cruiser, they're not going to see them in there either. It's off to the north. You have to walk through the woods on a little trail. It's probably 50 feet to the north of our beach. And that's where they go. And they just continuously party in there, drinking, raising hell. They got fires. They got a fire in there.
They sleep there all weekend. The party, I mean, the music from the party runs at 1:00 in the morning. I mean, the thing is, what really happens is that they launch the boats in the jet skis and all that stuff in Mashpee. People park their cars in the Ryder property, and then they bring the boats around, and then they operate out of the Ryder property. And that's like the recklessness with the jet skis is from people, you know, they'll pick up people on the jet skis, or kids will take out the jet skis, and then there's, you know, all sorts of reckless operating occurring in that area. But, you know, it's like, the thing I will say is this, right? And a simple solution might be, let's take the swim line and move it farther over across the sailing area, right? But if we just dial way back a few years in history, and I guess in this case, it's probably 10 or 12, but the trustees property, the beach area that they have that faces the boat ramp, if you will, right? It's a south-facing beach. They closed that to boats due to these types of problems. And when that happened, the activity moved to the islands.
Yeah, and they posted.
Now, the islands were owned by a developer who donated those islands to the Native Land Conservancy five or six years ago. So when they took over the islands, they were, and even previously, in both cases, they were entirely unsupervised, unmanaged. What's happened over time is that the Native Land Conservancy has worked with the Town of Mashpee to close access to the islands so that it's only open to basically people with kayaks and stuff. So now the problem has moved to Ryder, right? So if we put the, the problem was going to keep moving because they basically went the areas, and they did the same thing on the islands, but they will come in and chop down whatever they need to chop down to make an area. So if we extend the swim line, just as an example, they will move to another area along the Ryder shore, and they will just go in there with loppers and make a clearing and then continue to go. And then the other thing that happens too, and I don't know that this is anybody's fault, but, you know, the dispatch between Mashpee and Sandwich doesn't know where the property line is necessarily between the properties. So if there's a big fire running on Lowell Holly with the trustees, and you call Mashpee, Mashpee will tell you that it's Sandwich. Sandwich says, oh, no, that's Mashpee. And then they have to figure it out. So there's, you know, I think the collaboration with Mashpee is good and important, but it's like, it just kind of keeps going in circles. But the, you know, one of my conclusions was, because I went down there Sunday around 5:30 because I got a bunch of text messages and I was busy, but I made the time. It's just that the place has become kind of abandoned. I do think the place is a gem, but without having the lifeguards there anymore, and I know we have staffing issues, I totally get that, right? But without having the lifeguards there, without having the, I don't know if the bathrooms get open or not, but no gate attendant. But, you know, when we had the work campers there, the other thing about having lifeguards there is that the lifeguards, you know, the friends of the lifeguards and the families of the lifeguards come to the beach, because that used to be a packed beach at all times, and now it's deserted. And I think part of the challenge is that folks that do want to go down there to enjoy the beach, when they get there, they actually can't park.
Yeah. So why can't we man that gate and get a lifeguard in there like it used to be? And I think that's going to stop a lot of that. Because as soon as those people come over there, the lifeguard's going to hear it, pick up the phone, say.
If we can find a gate attendant as step one, especially on the weekends, that will squash this problem way down. And then the other thing too is when the gates close, just one more tidbit here, but when the gates close at 6:00 PM, and our DNR people, so I went down there on Sunday, we had two DNR people down there rounding up people to move their cars. Then they move all their cars outside the closed gates, and you couldn't drive an ambulance through there if you wanted to.
Yeah. I left tonight, and there was a couple of them parked on the outside.
And again, if somebody wanted to come, there's just no place to park for anybody.
Yeah. And if we enforce it the way it should be, 6:00 comes, the car's still in there, lock the gate, call the wrecker, and impound the cars and get them out of there. No reason why I don't think we can't do that. 6:00 says your vehicle should be out of there. If it isn't out of there, it's going to get towed.
Yeah. I think the current situation says if you leave your car in there after 6:00, we're going to come lay you out.
No, let them out. I don't see anything that says.
So there's two choices. Either what you said, or they have to wait till tomorrow at 10:00 AM.
Tomorrow. I think we just tow them. Once they get towed a couple of times, guy gets impounded, they're not going to come back. They're going to know better. But I think we have to lay the law down, do something about it. We have 10 complaints. I mean, that's quite a bit. When you get 10 people complaining, we know we got a problem. And we know they're drinking. There's the garbage cans from last week or whatever, and they haven't been emptied yet, full of beer. There's the garbage cans full of beer. So we know, and we got 10 complaints. So I think we need to do something like right now. Because we got 4th of July weekend coming up. We know what's going to happen. They're going to be there. So whatever we need to do.
Do we have any choices to do anything now, would be my question.
We have a choice?
Yeah, like options, like things that we could actually do. Because we require people, right?
Gate first.
Yeah. So where does the person come from, is the question? Does that person exist?
It's a work in progress, right?
The gatekeeper? Do we take a gate attendant from one of our other places? I've seen a couple of kids at gate attendants where there's two people, take one of them, put them over there for the weekend. 4th of July is coming. We know they're going to be there. We just can't.
It's every weekend, Bobby. It happens every weekend. Then 4th of July, 4th of July will be worse. It's every weekend.
But I mean, I think we're obligated to take a step forward and do something here, not wait.
I mean, because even the, I was just looking here, but it says that the conservation lands close at 10:00 PM. They close at 10:00 PM, but there's people there well past 10:00 PM all the time.
Yeah.
Anyway.
I'll follow up again with a couple of different departments to see what we can put in place short term. I believe that non-residents are allowed to park there, just that they should be paying a pass, daily pass or something, right? That one's not restricted, is it?
I thought that we said all freshwater beaches were residence-only. And I'm pretty sure the signs down there say residence-only.
I thought it was just Peter's Pond.
It says resident sticker required there, but it was all freshwater.
Yeah.
We did that actually initially during.
During COVID, and then we changed it after. I can't remember what it is, though.
Yeah.
I'll check.
Can we?
I mean, I think, and actually, I don't have a problem with non-residents using it. It's just that there has to be some respectful use of the property, and it needs to be available for everybody to use, right? And the noise, the camping, and the trash don't fit in that box.
Can we enforce if they're there after 6:00, we impound the car or lock the gate, and that's it?
Yeah, I'd have to check with the right departments. Off the top of my head, I don't know who does what.
Says you're supposed to be out of there. I mean, the law is the law. We lay down the law.
Well, you'd have to, you'd have to, I don't know what the rules and that are, but you'd have to put up a Well, you'd have to, you'd have to, I don't know what the rules are, but you'd have to put up a sign, right? The sign would have to say vehicles after 6:00 PM will be towed.
Gate will be locked at 6:00. You're in there.
I mean, there's multiple signs to say the gate will be locked at 6:00. Everybody knows that.
Yeah, they know it. But I think if we use the stiff hand and they know it, they're probably not gonna wanna come back.
Well, nothing is happening right now.
Right.
So something has to happen.
Right, I agree. It's a free fall.
Rules that there are need to be enforced. Anybody else have anything for Bud? If there's a copy of the Green Acres, I, with planning, I.
A village green?
Yeah, I'd like to see it. If you could make that available, I'd appreciate that. And then.
I got one thing, we had, I don't know if I can bring it up now, about Town Neck Beach. Town Neck, the safety down there. A year ago, I had gone down there in the parking lot we have at the treehouse. You go in on the left, you come out on the right. And I had talked about moving one of those posts on the exit because the people have to swing wide and come into the other lane if they're heading out of there, like towards railroad tracks. I went down to Town Beach today on a different issue on the handicap ramp, but I almost got hit going around the corner by the treehouse. Because somebody was coming out, have to make a wide turn because that post is there, and they have to go way out around the post to make the turn to go back towards town. And I requested that that post be taken out, one of the posts, at least one, that would allow them to come exit, kind of straight out onto the road instead of having to make a wide turn to miss that post on the side of the vehicle. Still hasn't been done. I almost got hit today. We're on the issue of Town Neck, parking lot and safety. Can we get one of those posts moved?
Yeah. I'll check. I don't believe that the departments that interact felt that that was the right way to solve the problem.
Yeah, I think, my opinion just on that particular issue, and I was gonna talk about this anyway, I'll talk about it now, but you know, it was interesting, the folks that were here tonight about the safety zone. And then we also have kind of like a third-party letter from Treehouse that came to us via email in endorsing that initiative, but also making some kind of requests at the same time about things that they don't want to see happen. You know, my personal opinion, and I'm not an expert on traffic engineering, but the traffic flow of the whole parking lot is reasonably dysfunctional. Patrick probably has a better opinion on this than I do, at least a more educated opinion. But, and I'm glad to see that Treehouse is supporting the cause, I guess, of the safety based on that letter that I saw, which again, I think it's interesting how it came to us. But you know, Treehouse has developed a number of properties, right? They started out in Woodstock, Connecticut. They did the big development, Mountain Canton. They've done here, they have the Andover property, Saratoga, I think there's Deerfield. Charlton, that's what I, I might have said Canton, but I meant Charlton. But all these, all these properties that they've done, right? And like the Charlton development is very significant. I haven't been there. But they re-engineered, what is it, Route 12 or 20, one of those routes out there? You know, they funded traffic studies, they put in traffic lights, they put in turning lanes, they made all the things happen, right? And I'm down at Town Neck and, you know, I really don't like the whole orange cone situation down there. It's unsightly and there's other pieces of that that bother me. But you know, the one thing that Treehouse really could do that I don't think we've put tons of pressure on them about, but I know that town staff has pushed them on a lot of things, but if they would actually just fund a traffic study of that area and engineering for that parking lot, it would make a world of difference. You know, I look at something like an In Good Health and the things that they've done for the town, which are well above and beyond the things that they don't have to do. And they do it on a recurring basis. And I think, in my opinion, this is a small, one-time request for a traffic study for the Town Neck area and that parking lot and some traffic engineering so that instead of Bobby guessing about which posts we should take out, let's just get to the permanent, long-term plan. Now, I think we all know that there needs to be more parking capacity somewhere. And I know that there's other conversations that continue to attempt to be successful about that. But I think that we need to consider a request to them formally from us for such an activity or get advisement from Bud and town staff about any alternative action that they suggest otherwise. You know, when they came here, they made some promises to us that they would take care of this. But the consistency on what they're doing today, I don't see it. And I think there's a, there's a, there's a big opportunity for a big win, right? It's low-hanging fruit. It's not gonna cost them a ton. And it would be very good for their relationship with us as the town. It would be very good for their relationship with the residents of Town Neck. And like, maybe we can start to put some of this stuff to bed. Because the thing about what's happening today is that there's burden being taken on by the town on a consistent basis, right? Whether it's with us, whether it's with calls to the police station. There's all these things that happen in the busy season. We all know they keep happening, right? So let's find opportunities to solve these things on a long-term basis is what I would like to see. And I think we need to nudge them at least to do it.
It's important to credit them on one thing that we pushed them on this spring, and that was to have, at the busiest times, not when it's slower, but to have one of their employees outside helping direct traffic. And they have been doing that, and that definitely is.
I did observe that. But it was funny, I was online today, I did like some Googling on Treehouse, Sandwich Parking, whatever, but you know, their own customers are like, geez, I went there to the parking lot, and the town parking lot is there, and then they have somebody standing at the exit of the parking lot. So I drove over there, but then they told me that was the exit, so I had to go turn around and come back. And I'm like, you know what, that actually kind of makes sense to me, right? And I'm not, I know you asked, and I'm glad they're doing it. I saw them down there speaking, and I thought this is good. I was hoping that person was gonna have a pamphlet that said, here you go. This is where you need to go. Park, go park at the marina, and we'll be there to pick you up in five minutes. Because that would make a difference, right? And that person, I guess, just serves as an ambassador and tells people what to do. And they put the turnaround sign back out, and it looks like they added to the bottom about the shuttle. But it would serve all of our best interests if there was a better, consistent, long-term plan that maybe required less-moving parts and efforts by many each season.
I know the rec department has very strong feelings about how the traffic flows and why they want people to go by that kiosk and, you know, where the person is attending. We even had a retired police officer from closer to Boston that worked there last year and quit because he was so frustrated by the way the public behaves back there.
Yeah, well, I mean, whatever it looks like for all the right reasons, I'm fine with. But you know, I just don't know when the long-term solution shows up or if it ever shows up. I guess that's the question.
Do we need a professional opinion?
I'm not a professional at that. I mean, Bud, what's your opinion?
Permission to speak freely?
Yeah, that's, that's what we're here for.
I have to couch this the right way. Three years before anyone in the town of Sandwich had ever heard about Treehouse, one of the founders met with me several times to talk about it. And the first thing I said to him was, you have to address parking first and be respectful, you know, of those around you. And I often send them my initial stuff that I outreach to them with and the list of things when we met with department heads when we were still sworn to confidentiality about what needed to happen. And they need to identify land that they control off-site to get people there. But you also have to realize that by the way our zoning bylaw is written, the ZBA, can only entertain credit for parking a certain distance from a property. And so I think we need to be a little bit flexible there. And I can assure you that we've mentioned, I don't know how many different properties to them to look at. And I know for a fact that they have explored them so far unsuccessfully. Like, we've been working behind the scenes for a couple of years now on something that could help, and that's still probably a year away. So I'm hopeful that a year from now, it'd be a lot better situation, but it's frustrating. And I think they're used to going into places and they throw down money and things happen, and that's not how it works here, especially in that area. Because it's, it is, so, you know, I don't think you can find a more dense part of town. So that's, and obviously, the beach and the dunes create natural barriers and different types of regulations that we're restricted by. So it's frustrating.
Because I think there's actually like a million positive things. This is the problem. This is a negative thing, and it's a big one.
Like, they're such a successful business, we're so happy they're here, we're glad they're in Sandwich.
And the building looks amazing, like, you know, all the things that are good. It's like, go make a deal with Stop &amp; Shop and start parking cars tomorrow. This is a low-hanging fruit solution for me.
It's probably safe to say eight to nine months a year, it's never an issue. Because people aren't trying to park down there. And I'll just say too, I think, and I've asked this, I don't mind saying this publicly. If the board remembers, we encourage them not to do it. But if the board remembers, there was a parking map that they agreed to when there was a lawsuit or there was a threatened lawsuit, that they restricted Town Neck Beach, the biggest beach parking lot that we have in the town of Sandwich, from people being able to park there and to run a shuttle there. Why don't they go back to those people who were threatening to sue them or sue them and say, we wanna, you know, if these people are all worked up at Town Neck, why don't you take Town Neck out of, because you remember, they had marked it with a big red line. Why don't you take that out so people can park there, and then you run your shuttle there? It's sort of frustrating because we get, we get the beef, they get the money, they get the business operation, and we're the ones that take the heat.
That's why I want to move it back to them.
Saying it as nicely as I can.
Yeah, I want to move it back to them.
Do we need a traffic study then?
Well, we, I don't think we can make a motion to force them to do a traffic study. But I think probably what we need to do is think about what the thoughtful approach is to move the ball forward on that.
Are they doing shuttles right now?
Yes, I believe so. I don't know when, but yes.
They did, I wasn't down there yesterday or today, but over Saturday, Sunday, Monday, they did have the shuttle running.
I will say too, I think that parking restriction that the board approved has been well-received on that one area of Gala Road. It's been a lot safer. My understanding, there hasn't been a problem finding parking, you know, that people haven't, haven't been issues.
Yeah, I think there's tons of parking down there between the marina lot, the canal front lot formerly where the market was. There's plenty of parking over there, just gotta be willing to put a few steps in.
All right, just so the boards aware, the zoning does restrict the distance from which a parking lot is supposed to be located to be credited towards this, you know, certificate of occupancy and the number of seats. So unfortunately, like, anything where people are parking now is outside of that area. We didn't change, just remind everyone, we didn't change the limitation on the number of people there because every prior owner has had this roughly, you know, within 15 or 20, the same number, which I think is in the upper 200s, low 300s. Wouldn't be fair for someone to buy the building, make it better, and now all of a sudden they have a different number, so. That was all research with town council, and we were very careful in what, you know, what we did.
And the traffic flow in the lot there, in and out, and it's.
We want it to go by our people, so people have to pay to park there. We want the money.
Right, that's their lot, it's our lot.
It's our lot. They have like, what, maybe 10 to 12 spots that immediately abut their property? The lot's ours.
Right.
And we keep those temporary ones near the front, the 20-minute parking for people who wanna have a coffee and look out at the ocean and then leave. And a lot of people do that.
Yep.
You know, and don't forget, they did the outdoor beer garden, so that took up their gravel lot.
Yes.
They put some of the food truck permanently placed type things, you know, their food trucks. That took up parking. So a lot of their own actions have reduced parking and impacted us. And I know they hear it too, but.
Yes.
They don't have public meetings where people come and complain.
Charlie, I don't, one of those comes under correspondence. An email was sent to us, I think we all received it, about Town Neck Beach, the handicap.
Can I stress this? I wrote him back and he wrote me back. I can't stress this enough. We will never have proper handicap-accessible walkovers over a dune that's a barrier beach that we're restricted from touching. That's a protective dune to protect the downtown. We will never have, and nor are we required, to have a handicap-accessible ramp to get people to Town Neck Beach. We have a much more accessible beach at First Beach where people can go, but there's all sorts of limitations on what we can do with the barrier dune. And we cannot shape it. So literally, our DNR and our rec, two to three times a week, go down there, reshape things as we're allowed to, re-site the rails as best we can and move the mats. That's the best we can do. I told that individual, there is no way that we can do what they want us to do and not violate the dunes or harm stuff that we're not allowed to touch.
Okay, I went down there today. Pictures I got the other day was funneled right down between the rails. Like, it just seemed was gone. Now, we've made our handicap ramp almost up to those handles, those rails. You say we cannot extend our ramp past those rails?
I don't, I'd have to go check with DNR, but I know like, we can't, the slopes to make something handicap accessible, we could never meet with those dunes. The way things have scarped since the thing, and it's just, it's too steep.
Right up to the top.
Yeah.
Mail probably another 25, 30 feet, we'd have to put a blue ramp down there, and that would solve the problem. We've made, we've put rails in there, handrails. So we've altered the dune or whatever that we put there.
Yeah, those aren't permanent, they pull out.
Not permanent.
Yeah.
And the blue ramp is not permanent.
Yeah.
So I'm just wondering if we could extend it out a little bit, that would take care of that problem. Because it seems just to the top of the hill where it goes down like that, people are walking in there, and they're walking and they're just throwing it right out. That's the picture we got. And somebody went down there and put some sand back in it, like they went down this afternoon. I'm just wondering if we could extend that ramp past those rails just a little bit. That would solve the problem.
It washes out underneath the blue ramp too, though.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what to say. I'm not as familiar with the area. I know they've reshaped things twice this week, and it's only Thursday.
Right.
We're just, we put the ramp there, and it's for handicapped people to get up there, then they get to the top of the crest there, and they can't go any further because it's all just sand. The rails are there, but they can't, they could never get a wheelchair down there or anything.
Yeah, there's, there's no way we can make that, that type of accessible.
Other than at First Beach.
Yeah, First Beach, but yes. I mean, there's no barrier, barrier dunes there.
Maybe we just take that out of there, totally. It's not really doing anything.
You know, I've got a couple of minor things for a correspondence, but perhaps we should skip down to the public hearing and address the rest of our visitors subsequent to that. So, the Sandwich Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, June 26, 2025, at 7:05 PM in the historic Town Hall Auditorium, 130 Main Street, Sandwich, Massachusetts, 02563. Upon the petition of N-Star Electric Company, doing business as Eversource Energy, to request permission to locate underground cables, conduits, manholes, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures in, under, along, and across the following public way or ways for Hunter's Trail. Installation of one new pull box, 10077 slash 021012. Work order 18561105. Anyone wishing to be heard will be afforded an opportunity at that time. May we have a motion to open the public hearing?
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
Motion by Mr. George, second by Mr. Ellis. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four zero. Please identify yourself.
Good evening, my name is Julie Longer, and I'm from Eversource. And, excuse me, we are requesting one pull box installed along Hunter's Trail in Sandwich, Massachusetts. We are going to be replacing existing conduit and adding the pull box. And this is for. We are going to be replacing existing conduit and adding the pull box, and this is for system reliability.
Thank you. Now, we have engineering report on 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 this, yes. Our P E is seasonal issues. Does anybody have any questions from us for Ms. Longa? Anybody from the public? Seeing none?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing by Mr. George. Second by Mr. Ellis. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four zero.
Make a motion to approve the N Star Electric Company, D B A, EverSource Energy, installation of one new pull box for Hunter's Trail dash W slash zero one eight five six one one zero five.
Motion by Mr. George, second by Mr. Ellis. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, four four zero. Thank you, and we appreciate your patience as well, Ms. Longa.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Okay. Dialing back, if I may, then, to a correspondence, statements, and announcements, just just a couple, if you don't mind. Six twelve, June twelfth, school safety committee meeting was actually canceled. June seventeenth, Heritage Museums and Gardens celebrated the grand opening of of the Barbie Family Welcome Center. It's very impressive in all respects. It was a great job. Six twenty-three, Monday, Sandwich Cares met at the SCOW and provided information related to five facilities operated by Next Chance Recovery Homes. Safe, sober, living accommodations are available to women seeking recovery from substance use and disorder. The effort may be visited online at, all capitals, nextchanc llc dot com. June twenty-third, bikeways and pedestrians met as well. Updates are available related to the Service Road Shared Youth Pass implementation. Participation in the public safety campaign was embraced, and the other concern that we heard tonight from Town Neck Speed Limits Safety Committee, School Committee met last night. Congratulations to the Sandwich Middle High School Athletics. Had a fine spring season, highlighted by Unified Track Division Two State Champs, girls lacrosse in the Final Four and baseball in the Final Four. The superintendent reported on the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five District Action Plan, and the annual action plan for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six was presented and approved by the committee. On Saturday coming, the Cape and Islands Chapter of the Sons of the Revolution will be holding a ceremony honoring Revolutionary War veteran Micah Blackwell at Old Town Cemetery here on Grove Street at eleven o'clock. It would be great to attend that. And that's all I have at the moment. So moving on to all business. Fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget updates.
So just want to give the board an update, and also to give you an update on Tuesday night's finance committee meeting, so there's a last date for fiscal year twenty-five is next Monday. Financial books stay open till roughly mid-August as bills trickle in, but they have to be from before June thirtieth. We're in really good shape. Several of the departments that historically have had larger problems, like the fire department overtime, much less this year, in deficit. In fact, there's a chance they might make it without requiring a reserve fund transfer. But just to protect ourselves, we asked the finance committee for up to a hundred thousand dollar transfer from the reserve fund. Haven't transferred a penny out of there this year, so the balance is still five hundred thousand. So they authorized us to go up to a hundred thousand for any accounts that might go in deficit. The only one else that was looked at was our DNR budget, and that was less than a thousand dollars. So we're in really good shape. As Bill Jennings reported, we met all of our revenue estimates by before the end of March. You know, the golf course is doing well in terms of receipts. Everything's progressing as expected, if not better. And then for F Y twenty-six, just to give you an update on the state budget process, as the board knows, the sort of the ticking order, it goes the governor's budget, then House, Senate, Conference Committee, final budget. So the Senate budget came out, I think, two days after town meeting, so early in May. And we haven't gotten any, we've gotten like rough updates, but we've gotten no hard numbers of the conference committee yet, so. That's still being hashed out between the House and the Senate through that venue. The conference committee typically, once the conference committee finishes up, unless there's like a particular issue that's a concern of the governor, usually the governor signs off on that within a week. So I would expect, you know, mid to late July, early August, we should have a state budget in your packet. I won't go through any of the numbers in detail, but there's a comparison of what we voted at town meeting. And if the Senate numbers went through, because that's the most recent ones we we had, were to the good, you know, several hundred thousand dollars to the good compared to what we voted in May. So things are looking good there. We should be fine. Once we get the final numbers, there's a couple of things that could cause us to scratch our heads, so we should talk about those just so we're aware of them as we get ready to to work on the F Y twenty-seven budget, which is not that far away. So unless the board has any questions, I guess that that was it on the budget. Every again, we're closing the books well. And so far, the overall projections for next year in terms of the state budget, the numbers seem to be going in our favor.
Anybody have any questions for Bud? It all looks good.
So, will we just keep going?
Sure, please.
The next next item relates to our discussion of a couple of weeks ago, and that's doing the presentation on the D P W and Fire Substation project to the Finance Committee. So that's been scheduled for Tuesday night, July fifteenth. If anyone can make it, it might be helpful to have people there just to hear any comments. What I did is I tried to do a list roughly of what areas of feedback we might be able to get from them or seek the Finance Committee's input on. We plan to do the exact same presentation, but on some of the questions that the board asked, particular site costs and some higher level comparisons, if there were other sites on what was looked at several months ago. So I think Weston and Sampson will be preparing a couple of extra slides to try to touch on some of that, but I was hopeful of doing a list in the Finance Committee packet, so they would know a little bit about what we were looking for input on, so. In your packet was like a two-page summary in more detail, but then a simpler one-page just in terms of some of the bigger questions. I don't know if you want me to run down those. If you guys have looked at them, you think they're generally okay? Is there any input that you want, you know, want me to incorporate or change?
I think the list is very comprehensive, actually.
I'm fine with that.
I'll be honest.
A lot of the items.
Yeah, a lot of it, like I think the first three, and this is, these are my words. In future presentations, not the fifteenth, because we'll do all of them, but I don't know if we have to spend as much time, you know, here, ten slides for each department on why we need to replace what we have or why it's in tough shape. I think maybe we can winnow that down to, I think it's important to say why each time, but maybe we can winnow that down to like two slides for each facility, or hypothetically, if the board says, okay, we're comfortable with the site, maybe we cut down a little bit on some of the stuff. I'm just trying to focus it more, not for the fifteenth, but down the road on the issues that people are most concerned about, and I'm sure that's mostly the money. So, you know, this cost per square foot, which we don't control that much of, but if you guys are okay with that.
I'm okay with that. And and Mr. Ellis, you were a part of that committee, and other sites were looked at, and they wouldn't help us in terms of dollars and cents. They were more complicated if anything else.
Working out of a site that's been used with access to a numbered route, and all of those things that go with that location have almost an infinite cost if you went to initial site development somewhere.
And then the Charles Street access is a key to the fire department response times.
Yeah, and that's that's an add-on that we didn't even think about originally, but it worked out really well.
All right, so we'll we'll plan that, and again, I think it's it will be the Finance Committee confirms, so it'll be Tuesday, July fifteenth, at six o'clock here. I believe after we do the D P W fire presentation, the school department's coming in on on some of those issues, issues about their budget and things and their buildings, so I know that's going to be a focus of that meeting as well, if anyone's interested.
Okay.
Go on to the next one.
Sure.
So Town Hall Annex, there's a good summary memo in your packet from Heather Harper and Leanne Drake, just outlining that the request for proposals has been reissued. The deadline for proposals to be received is August fifteenth. There's a separate website that's been established with a lot of the support documentation and other information at www.townhallannex.com. There's a better signage that's going out in front of the building, and the goal is to have that sign up before the July fourth parade. And then there's been quite a bit of outreach, and I know there've been, anyone who's expressed an interest has gotten a separate tour, but there is going to be a site visit for anyone who's interested, and I'm trying to find the date. I want to say it's in later in July. Yeah, Wednesday, July thirtieth. We have, this was asked at the Finance Committee about like, you know, what advice did we get beforehand? You know, so we've had Kevin Pepe, a local resident, who's one of the principals at Commercial Realty Advisors in Hyannis, has been through it. This is before the last time Brendan Bride's a former building commissioner, had a couple of developers go through it. So we've tried to get input from people sort of in the know. And then the Finance Committee also asked, what's the biggest restriction? And I think it's the sewer, you know, it's not, it's the limitations of the septic system, and if a sewer went by, or if there was a bigger system that was able to be installed, that that would increase the capacity and what could be done with the building. It's just sort of interesting because we were talking about wastewater on Tuesday night too, and it's sort of, you know, it is somewhat related, particularly at some of these properties, these older built properties where there's not a lot of space.
The if it's here, I'm sorry, I'm missing it, but the walkthrough on July thirtieth is that?
July thirtieth, ten A M. It's a Wednesday.
And the, and we I know this, I'm sorry, but the the date to
August fifteenth, August fifteenth, when proposals are due.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have an interest in a later date?
Well, I I don't have an interest in a later date. I just don't think it's, I think it's kind of a non-achievable goal. It's like working on a non-achievable goal is always very difficult. And I see that as a, it's not going to yield us a ton of money. We already know that. And I I'll actually go back to one of our first solicitations for people on what should happen with the Town Hall Annex. Just without any, I honestly, without any conversation between the two of us, came in the form of an email from my brother Jimmy, who has probably more experience, you know, hanging out in front of the first church singing Christmas carols than anyone ever, and has spent a lot of time in the village. And just suggested that on a very simple basis, that the Town Hall Annex become the downtown comfort station and have a really nice comfort station right in the village of Sandwich. Instead of our current one, which is, you know, we've we've done really yeoman's work to keep that going for the perhaps sixty years that it's been there. But take a walk up and look at it and realize that it was placed by the town in someone's backyard. It's less than one foot from the property line of the adjacent property, of residential property in Sandwich. And so renovating it in any way, you actually have to put the ladder on the the opposite side and be on the neighbor's property to even shingle the building. So I don't see that as a long-term good thing for Sandwich to continue investing in this comfort station buried in the woods that's on a property line. To me, the Annex property is your downtown parking lot for the overflow that you need for the library and for the functions that take place at the library, like band concerts, like every other Saturday, there's a craft fair where this lot for the Annex is packed at six thirty in the morning, and it's continued to be packed the entire day. So the property is already functioning as kind of our overflow downtown parking lot, and it could serve that function of a really nice dignified downtown restroom that we really need down here. So I think that's that's where my thought process is, instead of just sort of trying to hope that somebody's going to take it on with three hundred and forty-six gallons per day septic system in the front yard, is is thinking you're going to get a lot for something. So anyway, I just think that's, I think that's worth talking about because I think it there's definitely a need for it, but it also definitely has advantages to the town, as it says. And I'd like to see us just be more creative than we have been.
I hear you, Mr. Ellis. Thank you. In the current timeframe, we we decided to go this way. Let's see what happens.
Yeah, exactly, and that's that's, I understand and agree.
Lose the burden. Anyway, on to Rec Department. Anybody else put on to Rec Department? July fourth activities?
Sorry, Saturday night, which is June twenty-eighth, seven to nine is the concert with the Moonlighters, and then at nine o'clock fireworks. As I had stated earlier, I believe the company wants to know between three and five whether or not the weather is going to allow them to proceed, and so we'll be working with them on that. If for some reason it's canceled, we'll do everything we can to get the word out as much as we can. Hopefully, the weather holds. And then the usual series of activities on July fourth itself, which is next Friday, road race at eight in the morning, the parade at ten thirty, picnic in the park afterwards. We're just very thankful for the Rec Department, the amount of time and effort that goes into all those events and the number of volunteers that help out. You know, we wouldn't be able be able to do it without our rec staff and the volunteers, so we really appreciate it.
Absolutely. So compatriots here, where would you like to meet? At say ten o'clock on Friday, ten fifteen, and maybe more creative in what would we like to look like? In terms of, I I could be a suit and tie guy every day, but we have the golf shirts, you know, we could be fine with that.
Yeah, I think the Fourth of July is definitely relaxed. Sounds good.
Okay, okay, so we'll go with the blue shirts. That's Okay, okay. So we'll go with the blue shirts, that's fine with everybody?
Yep.
Okay. I don't know if there's new blue shirts, I only have an old blue shirt, so you know, you might need to expedite something.
Crack the haberdashery up.
You know? But if the fireworks get canceled, is everything canceled, or just the fireworks? It's an important question, because other people are going to ask it.
I would think so, because like, the band, like, I don't know. I want to, I would, they wouldn't want to play in the rain.
Looks like it's going to be cloudy, but not raining, but that's.
Yeah, that's, I, I know.
That's a ways off.
Looked worse a couple days ago, so.
Yeah, we can barely forecast it either for two days.
Yeah.
And I also want to just echo your sentiment on the efforts of the Rec staff on the 4th of July. They go way above and beyond and just crush it all day, so. And it's, it's a long day for them. They start early.
Yeah.
Absolutely. And I signal on that cake, what was in my mind is, is that it's Guy's birthday.
Yeah.
God bless him, and thank him. All right.
Charlie?
Yes?
Fourth of July parade. I think it's last year. Did we meet up on the other end of Morse Road? Trying to think, remember?
Yeah, because they, they queue on Morse Road now?
Yeah.
It starts at Morse Road at 1:30.
Yeah. We met up on the higher end of Morse Road, I think that's where we're going to meet, maybe.
Okay, we can do that again, that's fine.
If we need to come down, we will, then. I think that's where we met last year. We started up there.
Morse Road at 1:30?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're at the beginning of the parade.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Conorfi said, no matter what happens, not let them move you back in these parades.
That's a fact.
The selectmen will be at the front.
Yep.
One school and, I've forgotten.
Okay. Other matters not reasonably anticipated by the chair. I have none at this point. Do business? I think we touched on.
Everything.
Most of that.
Yep.
Anybody else? I'm, I'm still open. Okay. Anybody else here for public comment? Closing remarks?
Can I just say one?
Absolutely.
Um, I'm stealing a line for someone at the front table, but I think one of the emails on Monday morning was like, it's summer. Like, it's sort of funny when the weather gets better and more people visit the town, and more people interact, either positively or negative, with, with their neighbors, like how things pop up. So I think, you know, every single department's like, getting, getting calls and other things. So, we're trying our best, our best we can.
Yeah, I've seen a number of random Facebooks. And also, I think it's important, because I, the fireworks are scheduled for this Saturday.
Yeah.
The, the day after tomorrow.
Yeah.
Not a week from the day after tomorrow.
Right, right. I will say, in case anyone asks, like, one of the, one of the safety issues out there, the really old swing sets from the wing school, just like, really bad condition. Insurance companies, like, do not let anyone on there, building commissioner, do not let any, so we just took down the swings themselves, and it's been roped off. And that was all going to be in the way of the construction that's going to take place at Phase 2 anyway. And so we're actually going to work with them to see if they would help us put something nicer back when everything's done. It's, you know, it's going to be in the way for a while.
They were putting, by the, the stand, the side of it, by the snack bar, they were putting up holes.
I think that was because, we got to note that there's, they're still working on some septic issues behind the wing school, and so I think they were going to cordon off some areas that, they didn't want people, I wonder. Yeah, I don't, I wonder if they, I think they're trying to put some stuff up just so people don't go in certain areas, so, yeah. By the way, as you guys know, they've been great to work with.
Yes. Okay, okay. Closing remarks. Enjoy safe and happy celebrations of Independence Day. And please continue to maintain the situation in Eastern Europe and the conditions in the Middle East as overall threats to world peace, and our thoughts and prayers. Anybody else?
Have a good night, we'll see you at the upcoming festivities.
Yes, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Mr. George, second by Mr. Ellis. All those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Have a good evening, until January 10th, at 7:00 PM here in Historic Town Hall. Stay safe and be well, everyone.